Welcome to the candidates meeting for KPFA LSB. We have a lot of issues and this group is sponsored by Rescue Pacifica. So each candidate will present their point of view and why they're running for the LSB.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Davila, candidate for the local station board for KPFA. I was introduced to KPFA as a teenager, listening to WBAI. My relationship with KPFA has been for 42 years since I've lived in Berkeley. Our community needs diverse ethical folks with integrity and honesty to step up to ensure KPFA continues to exist and thrive. I'm Cheryl Davila, former council member in the city of Berkeley and founder of the Climate Emergency Mobilization Task Force. Welcome to the city of Berkeley, a looney territory. That was part of my legislation when on council. I also worked with to end urban shield, the militarization of the police. And I'm here because I was asked to run. And I've been listening for 42 years and I can see the difference in programming since I listen every day. I keep it locked on KPFA 94.1. And I recognize the importance of listener-sponsored radio station, its value to the community. I've witnessed support not only locally but worldwide. As an LSB member, I will work hard to continue the legacy and longevity of KPFA, to be corporate-free, maintain our national network, and continue to be anti-war and anti-racist. I have a degree in business economics with a minor in dance and I achieved an academic award in International Honor Society in Economics, Omicron Delta Epsilon. So I personally can't imagine a life without KPFA. Like I said, I'm a daily listener, mostly all day if I can. It's locked in my car, in my house. We need KPFA to thrive. It enriches lives, it provides experts' opinions, analysis, and enhances our worldviews. I know KPFA has benefited me, answered numerous questions, enabled exploration, and we can't live without it. Listening to KPFA is multi-generational. And many listeners' families, including ours, started with my dad and now my children. So I want to thank KPFA for all it's done for me. Electing Cheryl Davila to the LSB will bring diversity, questions asked that haven't been considered nor proposed previously, enthusiasm and love for listener-sponsored radio. As an LSB member, I will work wholeheartedly to ensure KPFA stays corporate-free, maintains our national network, and continues the legacy, as I said, of anti-racism and anti-war. Vote for the Rescue Pacifica slate. Thank you.
Hello, listeners and viewers. My name's Anthony Faust. I am a staff candidate for an LSB seat at KPFA. Some people may not know this, but we elect three-quarters of the seats on the LSB from the listeners and the staff elect the remaining quarter of the seats. I've been on the LSB before, several terms actually. I've also been on the Program Council. Wait a minute, what's a Program Council? If you're fairly new to KPFA, you might ask, what's Program Council? For many, many years, we had an institution called the Program Council. It was made up of listeners and staff, elected in various somewhat convoluted ways. But what the Program Council would do, would meet weekly, it would evaluate existing programs. How are they doing? Are they serving the community? It would also hear proposals for new programs. Well, along about 29, 2010, the management at the time, the manager who later had to resign over the check that was left in a drawer rather than deposited, that manager also eliminated the Program Council, saying that programming decision-making was entirely management's bailiwick. Well, I don't agree. I don't think my colleagues on Rescue Pacifica agree either. We think if KPFA is going to walk its talk, if you will, it's got to employ participatory decision-making. You could hear programs on KPFA talking about socialism and worker empowerment and other great ideas. So how can it be that when it comes to making decisions about programs, they can be made behind closed doors by one or two managers without any accountability to anyone else? So we at Rescue Pacifica favor bringing back the Program Council as an example of participatory decision-making, which is what KPFA ought to be about. If we can talk about it on the air, we can also practice it under our own roof. So that's a very important plank to me. It's something that the other side, the so-called protectors, seem to be against. And the other important point, of course, is that most of the staff at KPFA are unpaid. They're not here to get a paycheck. They're here to do something useful for the community. Nonetheless, even though they don't depend on it for their living, they ought to have rights. They shouldn't have their programs counseled for no reason and no explanation. So I think perhaps one of the things we ought to do is have a programmer's bill of rights. I mean theoretically, we ought to have the same rights as the paid staff, except for those that relate to pay and benefits. I would like to see that implemented as well. And finally, of course, we come to the program content, and I think we need to be unequivocally, firmly pro-peace. We don't have, oh, let's not have one person will be anti-war and then these two other people will be pro-war. No, we need to be anti-war. I mean, you can find plenty of pro-war, pro-intervention sentiments all over the corporate media, whether it be the New York Times or CNN or Yahoo News, it doesn't matter. So I think KPFA needs to stand for something, and above all, stand for peace. So if you're a staff member, please vote for me in the upcoming election. If you're a listener, please vote for the members of the Rescue Pacifica ticket. Please vote for all eight of them. Thank you very much.
Yeah, my name is Richard Stone. This is my second time running for the local station board. I myself have been listening to KPFA since, I would say, the mid-'90s and became actively involved in working with the station sometime, I guess that was in mid-'20 teens, when they got rid of what was in the morning program that was run by, I believe that was AB Allison and Davey D. And the subsequent support of the reinstatement of that program at the San Francisco Labor Council was a resolution that was initially passed, but then subsequently overturned when a couple of KPFA, or one KPFA member in particular, came to convince the council to overturn it, which, long story short, compelled me to run, not for the local station board, for the Community Advisory Board, which at that point, it was still somewhat a functional community advisory board. It pretty much was up until the time of the pandemic. So I served, I would say about four years on there. And then I decided to run for the local station board last time for, actually myself, for the aforementioned reason of the reinstatement of any semblance of a program council, especially in light of seeing what programs were actually being eliminated, programs such as Twit Wit Radio. And even with controversy, I thought there could have been much more redemption for the guns and butter, because at the time, that was my favorite show, and I'm sure we all know what happened there. But I still thought that redemption could have been in order and there could have been a second chance. But aside from that, it's just the principal notion of not just the reinstatement of the Program Council, which I think is important, but knowing that the programs that do get eliminated are ones that just happen to be dear to be at most everyone that happen to be present. So I myself am an anti-war vet. I served in the Persian Gulf when I was in the Navy during Operation Prey and Mantis. But it wasn't actually till Operation Desert Storm where I just sort of take it on the road first as an express my anti-war sentiment, and then join Veterans for Peace, and then subsequently started listening to KPFA, which has, that itself politically and the social conscious that I've developed over the years has led me to this point. I also served with the San Francisco Green Party. I've been on the county council since 2008. And I'm also, like I just previously mentioned, a delegate for about 15 years with the San Francisco Labor Council, with the American Postal Workers Union. In general, if I were to be elected and all my fellow Rescue Pacifica members be elected, I would help in turn with the reformation of a labor council. And in general, just create a more sense of accountability of the manager, which was vastly absent with Quincy's tenure. I mean, there was not, from what I remember, one audit.
Once again, I think that when I was doing community-based, organizing community-based forums, when I worked on the Community Advisory Board from 2015 through 2018, that's when I realized, I started to realize through the community-based forums, that the community need assessment reports and other things wasn't really, it was making a good impact. I mean, it was making minimal impact, but that's when I realized then that despite the good work that the Community Advisory Board that I was on at the time would actually be able to have some, maybe a very minimal effect on what types of programs that need to be created and maintained and to make sure that you have a little bit more than a kangaroo court when other shows to be eliminated, whether reasons political or whatever, to have a fair process in terms of elimination, but also in the formation and the maintenance of what good programming is left on KPFA. So I'll just leave it at that, turn it over to the next candidate. And please vote for Richard Stone and all the other Rescue Pacifica, LSB and staff candidates in the upcoming election. Thank you.
I'm Stan Woods. I'm one of the candidates for Rescue Pacifica slate, running for the KPFA Local Station Board. I was just explaining, I was at a Democratic Socialists of America meeting, that along with electoral politics, one thing that traditionally people on the left participate in is for leadership positions in unions and also progressive nonprofits like KPFA and Pacifica Foundation. And sometimes we forget how valuable of a resource KPFA is. After all, it reaches from Santa Rosa to Monterey. That's more than any, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's more than any commercial station in California as far as its range. So potentially, 7 million people can listen to KPFA. Now, one can argue, well, 7 million don't. But during the Gulf War, for example, the buildup to the Gulf War in 1991, The Chronicle had an article that very, somewhat reluctantly admitted, by various media analysis and polls and so on, about a half million people listened to KPFA in the buildup to the war. And that was before hardly anybody was online. So it was all people listening the old-fashioned way, through transistors, through car radios, through home radios. And so KPFA is a valuable resource, and we're fighting to make sure it stays that way. I used to be on the station board. I was the first elected shortly after, a few years after the recapture of KPFA from the people that wanted to basically take over KPFA and Pacifica. Some of you probably remember, we had demonstrations of up to 13,000 in the streets demanding that, and we did win that victory. And one of the byproducts of that victory is having a different democratic governance. And it's very important. You can't, Anthony used the phrase about walking the walk and talking the talk, walking the walk in, but also talking the talk. KPFA talks the talk, but doesn't always walk the walk. And so there's some people on the station that would like the station to be run the way the corporations run their business, completely top-down, my way or the highway, so on and so forth. And one of the things, one of our key points, not our only point by any means, but one of our key points is restoring a Program Council. Anthony and I both served on that some 10 years ago until it was unilaterally dissolved by the then-program director. And it made a lot of programming decisions. And it wasn't perfect, but it was pretty democratically composed of staff, listeners, and while the program director had a role, the program director or the general manager could only veto decisions if they could prove, not just assert, but prove that a decision would financially dramatically hurt the station or it would cause legal jeopardy for the station. And that's in my memory that never occurred. So anyway, KPFA and Pacifica isn't financial problems. I think one of the reasons is there hasn't been nearly enough effort to get, especially younger listeners, in. I mentioned about the DSA meeting I was at earlier today. The 100 and so people there, most were under 40, and the ones there, only maybe a couple dozen had listened to KPFA at all. And for activists, for serious socialists, for people active in labor movement, women's rights, so on and so forth, that's important, that's a problem. And so we want to dramatically expand the listener base. We want to make sure that the move to the right, when I say the right, I don't mean like Donald Trump right, I mean right and towards becoming like a corporate liberalism like NPR, has really been strong. Many of us oppose the US massive aid to the Ukraine. We don't support the Russian invasion, but we don't want to see World War III develop out of this. But there's been very little discussion or debate on KPFA. And who better than KPFA to have such discussion, to have such debate? And as Cheryl mentioned before, KPFA has overall had a very good record on anti-racism. But still, if you listen to the guests, still often, they're more likely than not to be the people at the head of various organizations as opposed to rank-and-file people affected by racist policies on the ground. And so that's some of the things we're fighting for right now, and that's about it. And also, like I said, also a little bit about myself, I'm on the Oscar Grant Committee Against Police Brutality and State Repression, which is endorsed by the International Longshore and Warehouse Union. I'm a former executive board member of International Longshore and Warehouse Union Local Six. And like I say, I was previous to on the Program Council and the Station Board at KPFA. Thank you.
My name is Daniel Borgstrom. Actually, I'm not running for the board, I am on the board. And I want to point out one thing that we have board election, and each board election, half of the board is elected. So right now, I'm on the board, I'm not up for election. And I've been on the board for about four, something like four years now. I spent four years in the US Marine Corps. That was during the Kennedy years. And it took me a while to, I didn't wake up one morning being a progressive, being a socialist. I am a socialist, but that didn't happen just overnight. It took a long time, took a lot, had to travel in various countries, various experiences. About KPFA right now, I think, well, there's several problems. One is our financial problem, another problem, which is very severe, and another problem is our programming. Now, I'm very much against any war that for empire, any war that the US has fought within the last, since I was a little kid. I would support the participation in the Second World War, yes, but none that have And so all my life, I've been seeing this, well, first I didn't recognize what I was seeing, but I've been seeing aggression by the empire managers. And we have to say this on KPFA. And so often on KPFA nowadays, I hear stuff that is pro-empire. It's as if, I've seen the US will, like Biden now, he'll talk about democracy and then he'll support a dictator. And that's the way it's been, and that's the way it continues to be. How can I say? As a veteran, I've noticed that you find this, among anti-war people, you find a lot of people who've been in the military. And by the way, right now, people on the board or like people running for this campaign, that includes Stan and Rich, they are military veterans. Let's see, I suppose I could think of more things to say.
Can you talk about your column?
Oh, yes. Recently, I wrote an article at Peace Washing, titled "Peace Washing at KPFA." And I do see it as peace-washing, that they still talk about being anti-war. I heard one of the protectors the other day was saying, "I'm anti-war, I'm anti-war." But these people are pro-proxy war. And in this article, I pointed out that there's one person, Ian Masters, who used to be in Los Angeles, now he's moved to KPFA. Not physically, but his show has moved to KPFA. I think he's still living down in Los Angeles someplace. And one thing you notice about his show is that he'll have a lot of progressive topics on there, but he'll also have Russiagate. Now, Russiagate, that's a hoax. And if you're watching closely, you'll see that's a hoax, almost has been, has been exposed as such, and he is promoting it. He criticizes the, what do you call it, the department or the military industries, the defense industries, the military industrial complex, for not being efficient enough. And it's true, they're not efficient. They're a corrupt thing that's out to make money. But his criticism is that he wants them to operate efficiently so that they can wage war in a more effective way. Well, I'm not interested in that. I'd rather see them be inefficient, rather keep them, I'd rather see them cranking out F-35s, which is a piece of junk. If they're going to waste their money on something, why not waste on stuff that will not be effective in a war? Okay, anyway, I wrote about this. And now, some people suspect that he is an FBI and/or CIA agent. Okay, all I can say is, quote that old saying, that if it walks like a duck, flies like a duck, quacks like a duck, then you still got to have, totally have proof before you say it is a duck. What we can say about this guy is that he doesn't fly with the mission, with the Pacifica mission. Let's see, there was something else I was going to say. Oh, yes. I wanted to mention a magazine I used to read back in the '60s, The New Leader. It had some very good articles, it had articles about, it had speeches and articles by Martin Luther King and many others, articles that were very good. And of course, it had a bunch of anti-communist, I guess you'd call it NATO empire, whatever stuff in there. Now, come to find out later, many years later, about this very nice progressive magazine I used to read, it was funded, at least in part, by the CIA. And actually, the CIA, and so here you have a mix of corporate, well, pro-empire stuff along with progressive stuff and the same thing. And how can I say? That's one of the effective things, effective ways to do propaganda, to tell mostly truth, to tell mostly truth and mix in a bunch of, a bit of propaganda. That's an effective way to do this, and that's what they're doing. Okay.
My name is Steve Zeltzer. I've been a member of KPFA for many decades, and actually, I started First Labor Show on KPFA in 1995, segment of labor. And my family's been supportive of KPFA and Pacifica their entire lives, and it's an important asset. It is the only broadcast station that covers, as other candidates have said, the entire Northern California. So in this period of danger of a world war, in this period of the danger of fascism in this country, in this period of threats to working people and their lives, we need a voice for working people. We need a voice for the oppressed, trade unions and the oppressed. And KPFA should be that voice. And that's why I produced programming on KPFA. I had a show called Work Week, which was a weekly show, half an hour a week, which I thought was, I would rather have more, but we had half an hour. So we use a half an hour. And what's happened at KPFA is, in my view, it's become more and more corporatized. One of the things that we support, our slate, is a Program Council, where the community, programmers, staff and management can work together to get new programs. In fact, that's how voices from Middle East and North Africa came, it came out of the Program Council, that program. There are other programs that come out of the Program Council. Why? Because you have the voices of people, and also the Program Council evaluated the programs. And one of the jobs of a manager at KPFA is to evaluate programs. But what we've discovered is there's no evaluations of programs at KPFA. The management is not doing their job. And we brought that up at KPFA Local Station Board meetings. We've said that... We've said that there need to be evaluations. There needs to be new programming. There are very few programs of young people at KPFA. And frankly, we need young people to be listening and participating in KPFA. I remember one time at KPFA, there was busy with young people, all kinds of exciting things going on at KPFA. It was an exciting place to be. Today, the station is like a morgue. You go there. It's like a corporate office. And some of the people at KPFA are afraid of new people. They're afraid their programs will be threatened if new people come in. Is that a community radio station? I don't think so. I mean, if people are afraid of new programs and young people coming in because it may threaten them, they don't really belong in community radio. So what we're talking about is two different visions of what KPFA and Pacifica should be. The vision that we have is it should be a community, working-class broadcast vehicle to get the issues of working people out. One of the things that I fought for at KPFA is to do live programming. Where there was a rally to protest the Zim ship of Israel, we covered it live. One of the things... One of the reasons that KPFA became a powerhouse in the Bay Area was it covered the free-speech movement live at Sproul Plaza. Now, isn't that amazing? So many decades ago, they were able to cover something live, like the free-speech movement? There was rallies against the Nazis in Berkeley, three blocks from the station. They didn't cover it. They didn't interrupt programming. Is this a community radio station? You would think that they would cover these things live. I mean, ABC, CBS was there covering it live, but not KPFA. They have a NPR-type agenda. And many of their programmers unfortunately think that that's what we should aspire to. We should aspire to be an NPR-type operation. Well, actually, NPR now, and Houston and other places, is covering other things that we should be covering. I'm not against all the covers that they have. But KPFA is a community radio station. It's not trying to mimic NPR, which I think the management is trying to limit. So our... My program, Work Week, was put off. The manager, previous manager Quincy McCoy, said they wanted to go in a new direction one day before the show was through air and was canceled. I mean, I think that that's part of the problem at KPFA. There are no evaluations. Stations are made... Changes are made. No discussion, no debate. I want to end by the meeting of the local station board, which was held yesterday. Because one of the responsibilities of the KPFA local station board is to vote on a budget. Well, the budget was not presented to the local station board members. Enough time, like a couple of weeks ahead of time. We get to the local station board meeting, and they only have a half an hour for discussion on a budget. And that's one of their jobs. So people couldn't... People were... He was asked questions, the manager... She was asked questions, Maria Negret, the business manager. She wasn't... Didn't have enough time to answer them. On top of that, she was asked, for example, how many full-time employees are FTEs at KPFA? And she said, "I can't answer that. I have to go back to the station to find out." Well, I have a real problem with that. If the business manager can't answer a question about how many full-time employees there are at KPFA, that's a question. The other aspect is consultants. They were complaining about WBAI in New York having all these consultants. They didn't know who they were, what they were doing. And we... She said at this meeting, they're only spending $5,000 on consultants. That's what she said at the meeting. Well, at the last year's budget meeting, that she reported that they were spending nine... The manager, they were spending $90,000 on a consultant to do the website at KPFA. Was that person hired at KPFA? Or is there... Where is this coming from, the discrepancy? So there's a problem with the accountability of the station. And we want to save KPFA. We want to save Pacifica. But I believe if it starts to get the voices of people out, if it starts to do live national programming, like on war, on immigration, on education, it will grow and it will become a real vehicle for the people and it will solve its financial crisis. So, thank you.
I'm Donna Carter. Again, I opened the meeting. I am on the LSB at KPFA. I believe that this is an opportunity for a new beginning. We need to let some things go and start over. And responsibility and accuracy is certainly a big issue here. And accountability. We need programming that's live, like Steve said. We need... We need not a discussion about peace, but a movement, building a movement with the radio station to have a peace movement. We need to talk about homeless issues locally. This is overwhelming. 10,000 people living in the streets of Oakland? No big deal, huh? According to some economists. We need to involve our membership. Some of the membership has gotten more involved since this campaign has begun, and I'm really excited about that. We need a new vision because right now, the vision that in the past is not being honored needs to be updated and carried on. Thank you.
We were asked about the local station board and in turn, its directors, that's the title, for that are sent to the national board. The background is, the official board of directors for the Pacifica Foundation is the national board. However, we have a local board in each of the five signal areas, you know, DC, New York, Houston, LA, Berkeley. Each of those has 24 members, some staff, mostly listener. And in turn, those... Each of those five local boards sends four of its members to sit on the local board. And they're on the national board, rather. And they're referred to as directors. They need to be three listener members of that LSB and one staff member from that LSB. So the way it works out is, in terms of practical politics, is whichever faction, tendency, whatever you want to call it, holds a majority on the local board, can typically send three of the four directors of its choosing. Because they'll have the majority to elect the single staff representative and enough votes to elect two of the three listener directors. And if the majority faction held a large enough majority, it could send all four, which is maybe a little dubious if you believe in proportional representation. Here at KPFA, we've managed... Our group, Rescue Pacifica, has been in the minority for a while, but we've always managed to send one member of our group to the national board. And right now, that member is James McFadden.
When you're talking about Ian Masters, just one thing that really annoys me about him is that when I've listened to him, which I can't stand to do, but I made myself an assignment to try. He pitches for himself on the air, not for KPFA. Now, I don't know what he's done during the fund drive, but typically, he doesn't mention KPFA or Pacifica at all, but he pitches for himself and his own thing. Now, and that's not supposed to be allowed. And the majority, the so-called protectors, what I call the pretenders, they... They're always getting frothy, saying that people at the New York station do that, but there they have this guy on nine hours a week. He's on twice a day, most weekdays. Not pitching, not mentioning Pacifica at all. And the other... And speaking of those same frothers, since Steve Zeltzer here brought up the budget, I happen to have been told or that... I know there were two budget meetings during the past week that all the LSB members and... Yeah, all the current LSB members were invited to. And at that, at least at the first one, and I'm assuming the second one was a replication of the first one, who people couldn't make it, the business manager said she wasn't going to present a budget. And they said they were not... The pretenders said they were not... They were going to have their usual monthly meeting and not present a budget. Well, I don't know why, but then they did present it. But of course, and then they went... They went stark raving, froth-mating, crazy, shaming people and accusing LSB members for daring to ask the question about why didn't we get the budget ahead of time? And they said, "We had two budget meetings this week, you little devils." You know, the budget meetings didn't present a budget, okay? So they're totally dishonest, but they're very convincing to a lot of people. And now they're going... They're saying that... The LSB meeting Saturday, they said that the reason that a lot of people aren't joining KPFA is because of stuff we're doing. Or actually, it was the last one. Sorry about that. Anyway, but in truth, I've handed out a lot of flyers, and many people say that they used to be members of KPFA, but the reason that they're not anymore is because there's all this conservative stuff on there. And they don't want to own up to that. So they'll give every other kind of reason for it. But also, they should be into the technological age, which we've been urging forever. And as Steve mentioned, we listeners have been paying tens of thousands of dollars for consultants to supposedly fix this technological age stuff, and yet we don't have archives that can be searched for. So I'm sorry, I've talked too long, but also, it's really important to realize that people are being played by those guys. And we're both for Rescue Pacifica members.
And you know, there should be town hall, community meetings. They don't have them. The requirement of the bylaws is to have town hall, community meetings. When was the last time? And when they do have it, they don't even announce it on the air. So they don't even let people know there is going to be a town hall, community meeting. That's basically a violation of the bylaws of KPFA, of Pacifica. They're ignoring the bylaws. There shouldn't be a report from the manager to the listeners. There are no reports from the manager to the listeners, asking questions, taking comments, taking calls. What are they afraid of? The other thing is the issue of journalism. Because as we all know, journalists are under attack. And Rescue Pacifica is... We are vigilant to say that journalists should not be in prison, particularly Julian Assange. And we introduced a resolution at the KPFA local station board to call for the freedom of Julian Assange. They said, "We can't support that. We're not a political party. We can't support Julian Assange." We brought it up to the Pacifica board. They passed it. So the Pacifica is supporting the freedom of Julian Assange. We brought up a resolution for Mumiya Abu-Jamal, another journalist who's in prison. Again, they said, "We can't support that." And they rejected it, not only the local station board, but the manager. I mean, but finally, the real crime, in my view, political crime, is when one of our own journalists, Frank Sterling, who has a program and has been training apprentices, they closed down the apprentice program at KPFA, the manager. He has been covering the struggle against racism in Antioch and the murder of African-Americans, the corruption of the police. He's been covering that for years. There was a rally in Antioch. He was covering it. And he was attacked and arrested by the police. Now, these are the same police that have racist texts, have been involved in basically violating rights of particularly blacks and brown people. And the FBI raided them. So we introduced a resolution, Rescue Pacifica, to call for the dropping of charges by the district attorney against Frank Sterling. You would think that they would support it. Instead, they said, "No, we can't take a side. We can't take a position." Now, the listeners, the supporters of Pacifica in this election have to ask, "Do you want people who call themselves the protectors or in charge of this station as a local station board when they can't even take a position in support of a journalist from KPFA?" This is what we're talking about. This is a basic tenet. Media is under attack. Journalists are under attack. Independent media is under attack. Journalists are under attack. We need a station that will back up the journalists at that station and other journalists here and around the world. And that's one of the principles that Rescue Pacifica stands for. And that's something that we will continue to stand for. So now, we're going to have Lisa Milos, who is not able to be here because she works, she's an interpreter, she's a member of UPTCWA at UCSF. And she was actually kicked off the board by this, quote-unquote, "the protectors," illegally. They removed her from the board. And then they... She went and appealed to the Pacifica National Board, and they brought her back on the board. So here's somebody who's critical, a critical voice, and they throw her off the board. And also, at the meeting yesterday, they want to set up another ethics commission, quote-unquote, "ethics commission," to do another investigation of Lisa Milos, Elizabeth Milos. So we'll hear from her now.
I want to say hi to everyone there. Elizabeth Milos. And I'm a member of the KPFA LSB. I'm also running for reelection. I want to state that I'm basically going to give a report about the last meeting. The last meeting yesterday was a sham. We had a report on finances by... And I tried to get the chair and everyone to allow us to have at least 30 minutes to ask questions out of the 60 minutes, because generally, we don't even get a chance to ask many questions at the actual LSB meeting. And they noted that down. When we asked how many FTEs there were, the business manager who was giving the report could not say how many FTEs there were. When we asked about the property taxes, they went off on a rant about how the Pacifica National Board or somebody had changed the name of Pacifica. And when the business manager had filled out the paperwork to pay the property taxes, and she had answered truthfully, truthfully, saying that the name had changed. And therefore, they were not allowed to pay the taxes at the nonprofit rate, and that was supposed to be taken care of. And apparently, it wasn't according to the report that we got. This was something that we had called attention to about two, three years ago, I believe. In fact, we found out through the news that... Through the news that the property taxes hadn't been paid in seven years, which meant that the building was almost going to be auctioned off in about a month at the time. And so we had to have a speak-out in front of KPFA denouncing this and saying, "Why wasn't the LSB told about this at the time?" Again, they... At the last minute, they introduced a motion... Carol Wiltley, the chair, introduced the... The secretary introduced a motion to again create this so-called ethics committee to investigate slander and libel. Basically, I know from the information that I got from the website, the website, that they already made a complaint against me to try to get me disqualified from this election, saying that I had been slandering employees and management and LSB members. And the thing basically is that in order for slander or libel to be determined, that usually is determined in court of law. But the other thing is, it's very plainly clear that this is a political attack because I have not slandered anyone. At the March 18th town hall, I mentioned that we weren't even being informed by management, by the previous management of KPFA, that there was a lawsuit that KPFA was facing and that we found out about it through other means. I'm not going to be stating anybody's names, but there was an employee who was charged with sexual harassment in a lawsuit. And apparently, I'm being... I'm being charged by people who are making these complaints against me for slander because I said that the general manager had been facing a sexual harassment lawsuit. It's not far-fetched to say that. It does not imply that he himself, or that previous general manager, he himself was doing sexual harassment. It's just basically anybody who knows the law, which is the person who charged me with this. this should know, because she's a lawyer, anybody who knows is, whenever there's a sexual harassment charge, it's the management that has the certain responsibilities to carry out certain steps to prevent that from happening. And in order, the fact that it reached the court of law itself means that apparently, these steps were not taken, and those are readily available in the law, in the records that are filed at Alameda County Court. So, those things that I mentioned is not to disparage KPFA in any way, but it's to make very clear that the, this present LSB with the supermajority, instead of assuming the responsibility that it has to deal with the financial issues in the right way, instead of blasting WBAI, and this latest, at this latest time, they blasted even WPFW as well, instead of assuming responsibilities of evaluating the general manager, they did not in the seven years that he was there, and they did not inform the LSB about the property taxes until after the fact, and they didn't even inform about the lawsuits. And there was $103,000 that they'd been spending, that they spent this past year on legal fees. They continue to state, falsely state that the $305,000 awarded to, in the defamation lawsuit was not their fault. They were just as responsible, if not more, because the previous general manager, together with one of the people who, you know, together with the treasurer, the present treasurer of the LSB, as well as a program host, testified voluntarily against Pacifica. And, I mean, all of this information is very clear. In fact, the business manager filed a deposition against Pacifica when the lawyer from Pacifica asked for postponement of the award of this defamation lawsuit. She basically took the opposite position. And then, she was surprised when this money came out, the only place it could come out, which was from KPFA. Now, let me say something. They still continue to move on the issue of secession, that the listeners are saying that they just want to pay money to KPFA and not Pacifica, because they don't want to give money to, you know, money that's going to go down the drain. You know, that is talk of secession. That is talk of breaking apart the network. And they've been doing that for so long, that it's almost like a modus operandi. The money that has, that KPFA has, has the nonprofit status that it has, is because it is part of Pacifica. The only way that we're going to be able to survive as a network, as an independent network, is by sticking together and rooting out. I mean, I don't want to say it like I'm talking about purging or anything like that, but we need to vote people that are trying to destroy the network. We need to vote them out. And if people don't do that, then we're going to find ourselves in much, in a lot of trouble. Right now, they already tried to expel me once, I think, from 10/29/22. And then, I was reinstated by the Pacifica National Board on January 5th, because the way they had done it was without due process, and they passed the motion, which was very clear that they had no basis from which to expel me. And again, they're going to go through the same sham of having this ethics committee that seems more like a House Non-American Activities Committee with a supermajority that they have.
Okay. Okay.
Is there any questions? I'd like to answer questions, and please feel free to ask me questions.
Does anyone have questions?
I just want to also say that I came back from Chile just now, so I was out for three weeks. I was at, in Chile, in the commemoration of the 50 years of the coup, and in many ceremonies, as well as activities. And I, I feel like this is a very important time. There's things that are, that if kept hidden, eats away at any kind of, any kind of progressive and radical change. It makes things much more difficult, like these past 50 years. There's a lot of things that are happening in Chile, and unfortunately, there's, again, the rise of fascism, because, precisely because for 40 years at least, people were not given the information in the media, in the, they were not, there was a lot of people that had no access to good analysis and actual facts. And it seems that if we lose Pacifica and let it become, you know, the NPR kind of news, we're going to be in big trouble.
I believe the sister in the back made the comments about you, about outreach and about the fundraising, and how the fundraising seems to be oriented more, more to the upper middle-class professionals and others, as opposed to working people. One example of that, some years ago, when I was on the board, I made the comment at a board meeting, "I'd rather have 1,000 people give $25 than 25 people give $1,000." The general manager, I'll give her credit for this, she was honest, she bluntly said, "Au contraire." She felt the opposite. She'd rather have 25 people give $1,000, because they're a more stable fundraising base. And I guess, from a real pragmatic business point of view, that makes sense, but if you want to build a movement, you want as many people as possible involved. And one last thing about outreach, specifically to younger people, incredible as it may sound, people do read community college newspapers, Cal State East Bay papers, SF State papers, plus both print and online. And why doesn't KPFA consider taking out an ad in one of those publications, or the East Bay Times, or some other publications? Sometimes ads for something like this would be, for a station like KPFA, would not be that prohibitive, but it doesn't seem to occur to anybody. One last point, some years ago, I was at a Pacifica National Board meeting, I wasn't on the board myself, I was serving from KPFA in LA. And the station there, KPFT, oh, sorry, what is the LA station? I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the, KPFK, there was a big anti-war rally that was centered on International Women's Day. And there was also a lot of women actors and actresses there from SAG. And the station there had a huge banner across the stage, "We Stand, Pacifica Stands For Peace And Justice." And so, they were sort of like official sponsor, you could say, of the, of the anti-war rally, of the women's anti-war rally. I haven't seen that at all at KPFA in recent years. During Occupy Oakland, the station did have more booths than usual up, so on and so forth, but I think they were sort of embarrassed in doing so, because you actually have programmers like Davey D., who does more on-the-ground reporting than the actual people from the news department. Anyway, that's it.
This is more or less a comment. I can see if anybody else has anything to say about this, but one thing that I think would increase audience would be a call-in show, or more than one call-in show. There are a lot of people who listen to the Sunday Show, just because it includes comments. It's a two-hour show, it includes only half an hour for the listener call-ins, but I wish it was a lot more, because that's the most important, that's the most interesting part of the show. So, if anybody else has any comments about that, any thoughts, I'd be glad to hear.
A call-in show, and they get like nine, 10, it's only an hour show, and anybody can call in during the whole time. And they get call-ins from regulars and just random people all the time. And then, also, I think their listenership is, they're also, I think, a listener-sponsored radio, I'm not sure exactly, but, but they recognize the DJs out in the public, because it's a call-in show and they're engaged, you know? So, that brings them back every week to hear different things. And I think that's a great idea. And I think youth need, I mean, I ask people about KPFA, I ask them about KPOO also, because that's the other listener-sponsored radio in the Bay, and it's black-owned. But, you know, people don't know about KPFA. You know, younger people don't know about KPFA. When I tell them I'm running for the local station board, they don't listen, they don't, they don't know. So, that's a problem. I know, like, I've been listening to it for 42 years, so I don't understand how people can live without listening to KPFA, but, you know, because I rely on it for a lot of things. But now, I'm getting a little discouraged, that's why I decided, once I was asked, to run. I've heard weird things in the middle of the night, you know, when maybe other people weren't listening, about guns on KPFA, which was bizarre. My sister, I called her, she was up, and she heard it too. And so, and then, with Ian Masters, shaking my head, because, you know, I was listening to it the other day, and he was, he was like pro-Republican on KPFA. I just was, I couldn't believe it, you know? So, and there's changes that need to be made, and we have an opportunity, as you said earlier, to have new beginnings. And, you know, we're in a, I keep saying, we're in a heap of trouble, and the heap keeps getting larger and larger. We have white supremacy, we have fascism, we have police killings, we have racism, we have all these things, and we need KPFA to be there more and more, you know? When that stuff hits the fan, we need KPFA to be the one to tell us the truth about what's going on in right now, in real time. And right now, I think it's swaying, and we can't let that happen. So, vote Rescue Pacifica, this slate. And I'm Cheryl Dobyla, so vote for me and Pacifica Slate. Thank you.
And glad to hear from you, and I hope we'll be doing these kinds of meetings again. Oh, and maybe even a picnic, hopefully, it's on our agenda, so, after the election.